All right, we'll call this meeting of the Board of Supervisors Ventura County of June 4th to... Will you give us a roll call, please?
Supervisor Bennett? Supervisor Parks? Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragosa?
Here.
Supervisor Foy?
Here, and Supervisor Bennett is traveling on his 35th, I think, anniversary, so we wish him all the best. And, um, thank you for the roll call. Hope he makes it back. I don't know. So, anyway, but we have a moment of inspiration, I'd like to call up Janine Holmes. She is the President and CEO of My Stuffed Bags. Their mission is to provide new belongings to comfort, to hope to thousands of children each year, who must be rescued from abuse and abandonment, and she does a tremendous job, so...
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you again about My Stuffed Bags. We're located at Westlake Village, California. We have a beautiful, huge volunteer center there. Over 2,000 people come in to stuff My Stuffed Bags for us. We have people all across the United States who donate items for children. We give our My Stuffed Bags to children who've been abused, neglected, and abandoned, and who are often whisked away from their homes with absolutely nothing of their own, can't take their teddy bear, their toys, their favorite things to cling to. So, we provide them this new duffel of belongings, filled with a blanket, something soft and cuddly to hold on to, some toys, some toiletries. Sometimes they're going into care without so much as a toothbrush of their own. We make sure they have some new things to start their new life with. And we also give them the message, because so many people participate in this program, that lots and lots of people care about you at a very important time in their life. Um, I'd like to, today, read for you what we call "The Prayer of the New Foster Child." "Now I lay me down to sleep. My anger is wide, my fears are deep. I'll be much safer now, they say. Dad can't hurt me in this place far away. But I've lost my sister, my friends, my things. I'm scared to see what tomorrow brings. Do you know, God, where I'm going to stay? Will people care if I'm okay? I'm just a kid who's all alone. I want a nice family. I need a home. I'll be as good as I can be. Please, God, let someone want me. Now I lay me down to sleep. I pray the Lord my soul to keep." Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I know you have a huge group of volunteers that help you stuff these bags and do this. And there's just, it just goes to show in this country, we do care so much about the people.
Absolutely. We're all very involved right now, in fact, in putting together bags for children in Oklahoma. I have a brother in Oklahoma City who's kind of helped me with the project there. So, yeah, it's yet another instance in where people can participate and help us out.
That's great. Thank you, Jane. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much for your good work.
Yes. It's always great to hear what people are doing out there, isn't it? Okay. We have the minutes. The county and special districts and the governing board held Tuesday, May 21st. Wow, those people are up to time. I'd say give them a raise, but watch out. They're ready, they're smiling for that. He just got one. All right. Mr. Powers, do you have anything on our agenda review?
I do, thank you Chair Foy. Two items. On item 23, the permit fee resolution. Request to continue the item until June 18th, 2013. Yes. And then item number 12, consent agenda agreement with Anacapa Surgical Associates. Request removal from the agenda. And that's it. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything on the agenda review? No, then can we approve the agenda as modified? Okay. We're then going to go to our consent items, which would be 10 and 11, and then 13 through 20... 20. Anybody have anything you'd like to pull or do, or...
Mr. Powers, I'd ask you a question yesterday about the one...
Dr. Finkhauser? Yes, it's my understanding that he will continue to work for the next few months, and so we needed to amend his contract to reflect that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, yes, thank you.
We have a lot of nodding going on, I guess.
Or maybe he changed his mind.
What's with that guy?
He'll be back.
He'll be back. Then we'll go to public comments. Do we have any cards? We have one. Lucas there.
Good morning. It's been two weeks. I don't like waiting two weeks, because lots of stuff builds up. A week and a half ago, there was a protest against Monsanto, a march against Monsanto. Over 300 people marched from Walmart to the Semenist Seeds Factory, where they genetically modify seeds and put them into our food. And, um, so the VC Star lied about it. VC Star didn't bother showing up, but they took all of their information on the protest from the Oxnard Police, that same department that murdered two people last year. And so VC Star said there were only 250 people, it was more like 350 to 500, and they said that there was property damage at the Monsanto, but they didn't have any pictures or evidence or any clear description of what kind of property got damaged. So VC Star should stop lying, and you guys should pay attention to those protesters that said that we need genetically modified foods to get out of our county, we need Monsanto to get out of our county. And the fracking is really bothering me. I was just reading an article in this paper here that said, you guys, a couple of weeks ago, said that they had to disclose fracking, but didn't say anything about regulating it. So, we're still just letting people frack our land willy-nilly and maybe poisoning our water, and there's no way of really telling whether or not they're poisoning our water. But we're drinking it, that's awesome. And Bradley Manning had his first day in trial yesterday. I'd like the board to pass a resolution asking the Obama Administration to give Bradley Manning a full presidential pardon. He is accused of leaking information about war crimes that the United States military committed in the Iraq and Afghanistan wars. And he should be given a Nobel Peace Prize for leaking that information, for allowing the American people to be aware of the abuses that our military is committing on our tax dollars. And the state of California needs to get the oil wells off of the Santa Barbara Channel. Please ask the State of California Assembly and Senate to do that. And community gardens, that South Seaward Gardens, have you guys been down there? It looks really nasty with that fence around it and all the sand. Fortunately, some of the corn is sprouting back up. They bulldozed it two weeks, three weeks ago. And now there's corn sprouting back up. And so they're going to have to go in there with another bulldozer and burn more oil to bulldoze the corn again if they really want to kill all of these food plants. But the corn's going to grow back, all the food's going to grow back, there are seeds in that dirt. It's a garden. Unless they pave it, it's going to keep growing. And even when they pave it, the plants will take over again. Please ask Mark Hussman to return the South Seaward Gardens to the community of Ventura to be used as a garden. Community gardening is very important. Green Art People is going to be doing a community garden. They're going to be starting it today, they've been in the planning phases. That's 100 North Ventura Avenue, a great community art music organization that is now expanding their operation to include some food production. And I'm really happy for them that they're doing that. Let's see, what else? We got to stop these drone strikes and stop the production of drones in Ventura County. I don't want to be sitting right next to a factory that's making robots that are going to kill people from the sky. Oh, Turkey! Nobody's paying attention to what's happening in Turkey. The news is deliberately ignoring it, so I'll let you know. There are peaceful protesters rising up in the thousands, perhaps even in the hundreds of thousands, all across Turkey. They're opposed to their government. And the government of Turkey is responding violently. So, I'd like the county of Ventura to pass a resolution asking the United Nations to impose sanctions on Turkey for their violent response to the peaceful protests that are occurring in Turkey. Meanwhile, New York City, Zuccotti Park has been reoccupied in solidarity with the Turkey protesters. And Washington DC, last night, there was a reoccupation of McPherson Square. And in San Francisco, over the past half a week, there's been an occupation at a land space called Hayes Valley Farm. They've renamed it Gezi Gardens, they'll be growing food in public space. And down in Los Angeles, there have been many protests against the Turkish consulate. And so I'd like the county of Ventura to really pay attention to this Turkish uprising and stand with the people of Turkey and against the oppressive government of Turkey. And that's all for now, guys. Thanks a lot. Have a good day.
Okay. Yeah, it's very global. Supervisor Zaragosa?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to share that I had the opportunity to attend the Memorial Day celebration at the El Rio Lions Club over in El Rio. That's about my fourth year that I attend that great celebration. Also, I attended the VFW Post 48 America Legion Memorial Day in Oxnard, and that's, I've been doing that for about 16 years, you know? And it's just really an honor to go out there and celebrate and honor our veterans. Additionally, I had the opportunity to tour the San Miguel Produce Roy. I can't remember his last name, it was Wakasuki or something like Roy and Jen. And they grow their greens, this organic greens that don't directly from the field to the store. I mean, they process the whole thing right off, you know, right through the truck, right to the packing house. They clean it, wash it, pack it, and ride directly to the store. Really fantastic. And they, um, they have about 250 to 300 employees year-round, which is really, really nice. I was just showing that with Supervisor Parks at, um, it's in her district when I got invited over to see it, and that's just a fantastic processing plant that they have there. And also, I got invited to the California State Park Foundation, Golden Poppy Awards. The city of Oxnard, the county of Ventura, and Mr. Mullen, we're going to get awards for this $50,000 that we gave to McGrath Park over in, um, I think Malibu or Pacific, Palisades. So, I got invited to pick up that award, Mr. Chair, you know, for the county of Ventura. So, maybe we'll ask them for somebody to drain, uh, not to drain, to lower the water, that's a bad word, lower the water over at McGrath. And that's all I have.
That's good. I know that there was a lot of people I saw in the last weekend that were talking about the efforts that you're talking about, McGrath, and boy, they just struggle with the idea that we just can't go in there. I guess years and years ago when this happened, they used to go in and just real quickly open it up and be done, and they'd have that thing ready to go. And there's so many people that are disappointed they can't use it.
Hopefully, one of the things that we want to do is lower the level down to some number, you know, to, so we don't have to breach that.
Yeah, exactly. It's automatic.
And I'd also like to adjourn the memory of those folks in this session. Thank you, Supervisor.
Yes, good morning and thank you. I'm going to start with the adjourned memories, because there are a couple folks that most of you know. One that I'm bringing forward, both Supervisor Bennett and I, to recognize the passing of Carl Ellisman. Carl and his wife Bee Ellisman were the founders of the Ventura County Ombudsman Program. And Carl, well, both of them have been very active. He was 94 years old, he passed away. True believer in contributing to the community and helping others, longstanding activist in the area of Jewish community, and many good deeds from the community. They both have received many awards and commendations. He was an active figurehead for several non-denominational programs, particularly early founders, I said, of the Ombudsman, but also of the area's food chair program, and served with that from '85 to '97, and a member of the Ventura, City Ventura Housing Authority. So, he was a very socially conscious man and with strong convictions. And he will certainly be missed by many in the community. And then, secondly, for a, someone who probably, again, you'll all know, when I say his name, is Colonel Paul Dupree. He's been in our boardroom. In fact, he was recent, he was in last year when we did the Purple Heart recognition, because he was a Purple Heart recipient. He celebrated his 97th birthday, and so he's, um, nine, oh, actually, that was in 2011, so he was 98, 99. This picture, you all remember Colonel Dupree. Served in the United States Marine Corps for 33 years. Decorated with 10 Battle Stars, the Legion of Merit Silver Star, and two Purple Hearts, and much more. His very lengthy resume is being recognized in 2011 as a patriotic citizen of the year. Just an amazing man who gave a lot to his country and to all of the military veterans and friends that he had over the years, a very genuine, caring man. So, to recognize those two particularly. And then I want to give you, as brief as I can make it, how many papers would you like from the CSAC Conference? I'm not going to give you that many, I promise. I did bring back some things, though. The key part of the CSAC Conference was to carry forward over to the Capitol and to the governor. Here, I'll provide these. This, basically, our position and our pretty steadfast position on the whole implementation of the Affordable Care Act. Some basic principles related to that, and I think I gave those to you earlier, and that is to, that we do not support any program realignment. We do not support the governor's proposed $300 million shift of dollars from the 1991 realignment pot. And that we feel we need to have at least two years, at least two years, free of any shift of dollars or programming to be able to, for all the counties to get their feet on the ground and to get the Affordable Health Care Act implemented, and to get some experience and to provide some evidence-based information back to the state on how the programs are being implemented. So, we, particularly the public hospital systems, feel that we are ready up and ready to go, and we should be kept whole until which time... This is going to be a year-to-year negotiations and discussions, probably for a few years, till we all really get this Affordable Health Care Act underway. So, um, so this was a, what I provided you, and I'll provide it to the clerk also, the coalition that was formed, and you see the group on the left-hand border, that has carried this over to Sacramento, over to the Capitol, and to the legislators that are holding these key elements, again, to our positions, we should be reinvesting in our local health care, not taking funds away from it. So, there's extensive negotiations still ongoing and will be this whole week. As you all know, July 5th, June 15th, the budget has to be in and settled. And so, we did feel like we made some progress with some of the legislative leaders, particularly those who were former supervisors and now sit in the assembly seats. And they actually scored, that's the term that's used, that they basically took the $300 million that the governor proposed, has proposed and may revise, and set it aside, keeping it open for further discussion, why there's negotiations going on with the public hospital system, with the CMSP counties, and with the independents. And the fact that you have three groupings of different system providers says that there isn't one size that fits all. And I'll say this, the governor has a team, Secretary Diana Dooley, we were in meetings with she, and with Anna Montesanto, the, his chief guru on numbers, and she is very persuasive and very sharp, but her focus is clearly on the numbers side of it, and not, well, that's where her focus is. And, you don't believe it at that. So, the policy committees and the board of directors of CSAC are holding strong on this, but as with anything, continue to negotiate and see where we might, we might do what's best to protect the counties. We have, there have been significant losses, we know, since 1991 in areas like public health, as we have in our budget today, our preliminary budget. And so, we really have tried to impress upon the leadership that reinvesting is the smarter way to go, and in fact, should be the clearer path to go. And taking dollars at this time from the counties, one is not necessary, because there is that three-year commitment by the, with the Affordable Health Care Act by the federal government to keep the states whole 100%. And so, there's, we should have that amount of time to be able to get some evidence and implementing of the Affordable Health Care Act to show that we can do so successfully. And it's a struggle, because the governor has, I think, set a position that he's holding strong at this point, but we'll see, we'll see where there might be some settlement on negotiations, mostly with that. Mr. Powers was up there and involved, engaged with, I'm sure, lots of sidebar conversations. The public hospital system's been very strong at the table, and in line with CSAC's position. But there's a lengthy points of negotiation that are still being discussed. The other piece I brought to you was, is a piece that is being put out by Senator Darryl Steinberg, who's a present pro tem of the Senate. And we met with him also. In fact, the coalition of folks on the Protect the Health Safety Net met with him. And the, Steinberg has always been the champion, I think, in his entire legislative career for the mental health community. And he's proposing this Invest in Mental Health for Community Wellness piece. And the important part of it is to, he identifies funding that would be one-time funding from the State General Fund, and I want to say it was, I don't have the chart with me, but approximately $150 million. But that would be matched by both federal dollars and MHSP. And to look at bringing some additional services to counties for mental health services in the way of crisis support teams and hospitalization, patient days for beds. And you see the list there that this proposal he's putting forward. And we'll see, it's, because even though it does just call for one-time funds, the fact that he is the pro tem of the Senate gives a little more weight than most others. But he's looking to enhance and ramp up additional services to serve the mentally ill. And we all know what the arguments are to support that, and it's certainly to do everything we can to keep mentally ill out of our jails and out of our hospitals, and get them services early on, and as he has titled this wellness. So, anyway, there's always horse trading going on, and this is probably one that he is, he, we'll see if he can step forward and lend some leadership to our needs for the Affordable Health Care Act, and see where his legislators, his fellow legislators fall with his proposal. Right now, it's, it's come out of one committee with support, but we'll see if it makes it through the rest of the way, because it does, it does have some funds in the mix. I think that's probably the highlight of most of the focus that took place in CSAC. There are other policy committees, but the main focus was on the Affordable Health Care Act. And that's it, I think. Mike, did you have anything to add?
I think you've covered it very well. Appreciate your leadership up there, and as the board being so knowledgeable about healthcare issues, I think it definitely made a difference. When you talk about the federal reimbursement, it's 100% for the first three years, then it drops down to 90% after that. So, it's still very high. So, I think the state's liability is fairly limited. From the county standpoint, what we're saying is, let's look at the actual numbers, let's not base it on really uncertain projections, which is what they're doing now. That's a huge amount of money with tons of uncertainty. Let's just see how it plays out.
Right, right. And we are a low-income provider, a LIP county, and, but there are four counties that aren't, like Fresno, San Joaquin, and, and they, and so they're struggling with how to, how to get them ramped up and able to take this flip of the switch on January 1st. All of our LIP clients on January 1st become part of the Affordable Health Care Act. And the governor feels that that is then what shifts the burden, the risk, to the state. Now, I think there's risk, there is risk at the state, but there's risk at the counties, too, because we know that there's still this three to five million who are, will remain indigent and uninsured that will continue to come through the hospital doors at the county level, in addition to us having to ramp up enrollment for the newly insured. And we've talked with the governor and his team to say that that is not going to happen overnight either. There'll be a slow, not a slow, but there'll be an enrollment process that will take time for the public education, and then, so it's not like within six months there's going to be a huge impact to the state or to the counties. So, that will take time, which then really does say that we should all take a deep breath and take some time for the implementing of this. We hope it's resonating up there, we're not, we're not real sure.
How many do we estimate that we're going to have that are going to be uninsured here in Ventura County?
After?
Uh-huh, after, huh?
About 60, 70,000, somewhere.
60, 70,000? That's a lot.
That's a lot. You know, it's interesting, we watched with the ACE program, which became our low-income health program, which was an incredible deal, like $100 a year for coverage of $5 companies. That took a long time to catch on, to really get people enrolled, and it was a wonderful program. So, these things just take time, as will this new expanded Medicare.
And there was quite an article in The Times yesterday about how are we, how is this program to reach young people, which is, of course, what you want, because it strengthens and spreads the base and the cost. And even at $100 a month, there'll be young folks who'll say, oh, you know, I don't need insurance. And it'll be tough. We'll have to do a very aggressive enrollment. And I think since we met last, we now have the exchange, which we've all been informed of. And actually, up in Sacramento, being able to say that to the governor speaks volumes of our system, too, as to trust us, we can make this work and give us the time to do it. But the, you know, the exchange in itself is going to require some ramping up. And so, it's, it's, this is the, this is the time in Sacramento of high sausage making. If you don't like sausage, don't go up there. All right, I'll keep it at that. Thank you.
I do appreciate the governor willing to not just say, let's just keep throwing money. He's trying to figure it out.
He is.
I mean, he's trying to deal with the issues, and even though people say there's a little extra revenue, more than we thought was coming out, I call it surplus. But he doesn't want to spend it all. I heard that we had $4 billion, and legislature within a week had $100 billion spent, you know? So, I mean, we've got to be careful what's going on, so.
Well, as Anna Montesanto likes to say, there are wants, and then there are needs, and then there's, you know, how are we going to pay for them?
That's right, reality. Supervisor?
I just thank you very much for keeping us prized, and then also being able to speak for us in Sacramento. We really are going to have some competition in... We really are going to have some competition and particularly with those healthy youngsters and seeing that they see the wisdom of getting health insurance. One accident could set you back $10,000 and when you're, in your early twenties, for example, that's going to be hard to make up, so. And then you're also going to have a lot of competition from the major insurance companies trying to get that demographic. So, I think we need to step up and do what we can. And it would be nice also if there was incentives, you know, other than the wisdom of it, if there were some actual incentives. And it's kind of unfortunate that there is a period of time when you can't enroll, you know, once the enrollment's closed. So, it'd be nice to be able to just get, get these folks in there and get as many safe from, you know, potential major debt in their life if they have injuries, so. But thanks for your work on that. Some of the events we were able to attend include the Peace Officers Memorial. That was probably the most powerful one I've ever been to. It was very emotional. A widow, Lisa Simmons, spoke about her, her husband, who's with the SWAT team in Los Angeles, Randy Simmons. And it was just a very emotional and powerful and beautiful memorial, so kudos to those who helped put that together. Also, was able to go to the Thousand Oaks Rotary Youth Citizenship Awards. It's so lovely to see the, the schools throughout the Caneo Valley select the students, one from each school, to honor and just seeing the parents wiping away tears as their kids are getting awards, it was very sweet. And also able to attend on the other age spectrum, the Senior Concerns had a love run over the weekend and that was, had 1,500 people there, so I didn't see Supervisor Zeragosa there with his tennis shoes, but maybe next year. And then we also had an art walk. Once a year at Thousand Oaks, the Caneo Valley Museum there has an art walk and very well attended and great to be there. So many different things going on through, throughout the county, hard, hard to get to all of them, but one of the highlights of the weekend was in Dos Fiantos, the residents there put on a thank you to the firefighters from the Camarillo Springs Fire. And it was great to see the whole community out there, but the firefighters really were touched, you know? They were very touched to be thanked by the community. You would, you would think that they would know how much we appreciate them, but it was nice to have them all out there and kudos for the residents and the homeowner associations out there for putting it on. And then I also wanted to thank a staff person here at the county, David Goldstein, you know, and we've mentioned him before up here, but he has these great articles that he has in the Ventura County Star Eye on the Environment and helps to educate the community. But I had a businessman who lives in Santa Rosa Valley come up to me and tell me how excited he was to get a call from David because he's, this businessman's looking at a, a business that helps in recycling to save resources and to actually get a call from the county, very proactive and, and trying to assist. So, I, I thought that definitely warrants a kudos from the board here, so thank you for that effort of reaching out to our business community. And I just noted also, we approved in our consent calendar, we do a monthly hazardous materials discharge summary report. And just as we are going into looking further at fracking, you see that pretty regularly and even today's report, you see accidents, spills involving crude oil as well as the produced water, which is the wastewater that goes down the wells. So, these are pretty regular occurrences and kind of brings our attention further to the need to have some better transparency of, of where these wells are and what chemicals are, are out there, something we don't know at this point. So, I would ask at this point that the board close and honor the people on this list and I just want to call out Eileen Johnson, who is a wonderful mother, but also had a great career working at Kalina Middle School and Westlake Hills Elementary School. And out in Santa Rosa Valley, Lisa Ann Smith, who was a graduate from Newberry Park High School, but very much an animal lover and, and working with a gentle barn in Santa Barbara and had gotten educated with the exotic animals and learning how to train them over at Morrow Park College. So, ask that the board close and honor those people on this list. And that concludes my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. And go through quick, I do want to say that honoring all our vets and everything else last week was just tremendous. It's just great to see how many people do care about our, our warriors and people who go out and give us the freedoms to do what we do every day. And it was interesting to hear somebody say that, you know, it's not politicians that give us freedom, it's the vets who give us the freedom to do what we do. And I, I, I agree every day that we, we appreciate what we do have and it comes with a price and freedom is not free, you must fight for it. And we continue to, to do that. But I know growing up as a kid and, you know, in the Vietnam War, we didn't appreciate those vets the same way we do now. And, but I'm glad to see they're getting the same recognition too during that time, so. It's great. Also, we had Sarah Baxter, remember Sarah Baxter who came in? And she won the, her third straight title in the girls' 3200 meters and she's only a junior. She is the fourth runner in the state history ever to win three titles. She won the 10 minutes, won the event in 10 minutes, 10 minutes, .71 seconds, more than 14 seconds ahead of second place, but she, you know, she was disappointed, so she wanted to do it in her 10, 10 minutes. So, yeah, it's just great to see a great athlete. Remember how humble that young lady was? And we'll probably see her in the Olympics soon. Also, out in Santa Susana, they had their community beautification, they picked up 25 tons of green waste, 25 tons, so it was a big deal. It was the biggest event of the year. As one of the county staff pointed out, with the fire season coming on, this free cleanup provides a valuable service protecting homes or anything else. So, I'm sure the fire chief says, let's make sure that happens everywhere, right? As we're seeing more of these fires going on, we're going to have a really tough, tough, tough fire season. So, I too want to adjourn in memory of the people on that list. I hate to put it up there, it's a very long list, but anyway, those are my comments too. So, why don't we bring down our fire chief, our fire protection, and we're going to talk about some appointments?
Good morning, Chair Foy, members of the board, Mr. Powers, for the record, Mark Lorenzen, County Fire Chief. Before your board today, we have a request for approval of three appointments to the fire district's Board of Appeals. Those three individuals are William Amador, Jennifer Kirby, and Gary Semelich. Your Board of Appeals serves in a capacity to hear any appeals related to our local fire ordinances. And just as a matter of interest, we haven't actually had to convene the Board of Appeals in many, many, many years. So, with that, I'm open to questions.
That's the recommended action.
That's great. So, we haven't had it in for years, huh?
Which is good.
Yeah, which is good. People are going along with what we believe, huh? That's great.
If I might, I see that we have deployed to the powerhouse fire.
We have. We, we sent 10 fire engines, so two strike teams, five type one, our regular larger fire engines, and three of our brush, I'm sorry, five of our brush engines up there. Our type one engines have returned back, they're starting to get a pretty good handle on that fire up there since there's been a change in the weather. But it is, again, as I talked about during the Springs Fire, the value of our system is that we help neighbors help neighbors. And a few weeks ago, it was our turn to receive help and now it's Los Angeles County and the Angeles Forest's turn, so again, not a good sign.
Going to be a tough year.
Yeah.
But thank you and all, all your troops.
Chief, do we have any of our men over in the Palm Dale?
Yes, we do.
Just talking.
Right now, probably about 30 individuals total.
30 individuals.
It's tough to hear when they lost a few structures to them.
Yeah.
That's a tough one, so. Anyway, all right.
Thank you.
That passes, thank you. And then we have a contract, CEO's office. Are we doing something here? Yep. Economic Development Collaboration Collaborative. Here they come.
Good morning, Chair Foy, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Kristi Madden with the County Executive Office. Consistent with this board's commitment to economic development, we're pleased to present to you today an opportunity to contribute $30,000 towards the creation of a film liaison contract position that will be housed at the EDCVC. The film liaison position is not intended to be a substitute for local permitting requirements, but will be a position that will help to streamline and navigate the film industry for the filming community that comes into Ventura County, which can oftentimes be very complicated and complex. This is a one-time commitment. The film liaison contract position will be collecting a variety of data and information to assess the effectiveness of the position. And it is the intent of the EDCVC to revisit the funding methodology for how the position is financed prospectively. There are a variety of people contributing to the program, not only local governments, but local tourist organizations are also contributing funding to this position. We do have Bruce Stensley from the EDCVC here today if you have any questions.
Let me just ask real quick, if I could. As you talk about funding, this hopefully will make it easier, because I've heard that before, you come to Ventura County, you've got to go all over the place. This is hopefully go here first and we'll direct it. Isn't there some way through the permitting process to help fund this, make it a little bit easier through some, and Bruce may talk on that again later, but maybe, yeah. But I'm just saying, you know, let the industry fund itself because hopefully we're saving time, money and everything else, so. I know Supervisor, you had a comment?
What question?
Okay, let's hear from Bruce first.
Good morning, Bruce Stensley, President, EDCVC. Good morning, Chair Foy, members of the board, Mr. Powers, staff. Just to augment question or comments there, just a couple of things. This is clearly an economic driver or a potentially larger economic driver for the community. There are two barriers relative to our getting as much advantage out of it as we can. One is the perceived indifference in Ventura County by the film industry that we don't have the capacity to respond and facilitate their action. The second is the reality is that sometimes film comes to the community and it generates conflict and we want to ameliorate that. So, our intent by creating the film liaison is to both better communicate to the industry and do it in a manner that minimizes conflict, maximizes the positive opportunities and ultimately toward generating greater economic output through purchases from local vendors, lodging. There's a film shooting starting this morning at 5:00 AM in Ventura called Don Patrol, a, I guess you would call it a surf movie. They're occupying 40 rooms at the Crown Plaza for the next several weeks, so those kinds of opportunities are what we're looking to expand on. In response to your question, I'm not sure exactly how the permit money moves through, so I may not be the right person to answer that question. What we're looking to do is to identify the funds over a two-year period to ensure that we've got the capacity to do this in a public-private partnership, figure out where, based on the data, the most opportunities arise and then shift or align the funding to that in a commensurate manner. So, we appreciate your consideration and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I was wondering if you're looking at putting together a website that might provide information to the studios on, you know, where they can film, how much, what the process is for each of the different entities out here?
Yeah, we have a Ventura County Film Commission website that is underutilized and under-resourced at the moment. We're ready to launch that hopefully a little bit later, or relaunch it, I should say, a little later in June with more information. We did launch a website about a year ago called Ventura County Film 411, where we've created a sort of repository of information about local capacity and resources. We've gotten some great hits on that. I have a testimonial if you want to hear it, but I'll save you that. From a voiceover specialist who immediately after putting his information on the 411 was contacted by an old friend of his at Microsoft, he's done now four voiceovers on major training videos, these are for Microsoft, a huge issue. So, we know that getting that kind of information out does generate economic opportunity.
That's, that's, that's really interesting, the idea that you can help network in that, in that to help jobs for beyond just trying to get the movies out here, but to actually help employees. I, I was also wondering, it seems that once you get someone from the studios who knows that this is a good place, they're going to bring more business out here and so I think it's a, you know, a really worthwhile pursuit. I also know Kim Prilhart in our RMA department, our planning department, has already done some research out there about what the different cities require. But I actually did a small film and I had, my, my criteria was where's the cheapest to film, but you really have to make about 10 phone calls to find that out.
That's right.
So, it's good that you're looking at putting it together in one.
Yeah, two things. We've a three-part process in, in what we've been trying to do here strategically. The first part was the Film 411 website, which we need to put a little more energy into, but make sure the industry is aware of the capacity that is available here. Part two is this liaison position that can do more facilitation on both ends of that. Part three is really streamlining, I shouldn't say streamlining, making consistent the permit process and information. Ms. Prilhart, Chris Stevens and others have been hugely supportive in that. We'll get to that in, in the near future, I hope. It's not to make each city necessarily follow, well, we want each city to follow a consistent process so that not, we're changing how one gets permits, but if you get a permit in Ventura and then you cross the border into the county and discover that you have all sorts of different, it's the same stuff, but stated differently, we want to minimize that confusion.
All right, I wish you the best. You might also want to educate the industry which areas they can do adult filming and which they can't, which includes, you can't do it in the unincorporated county.
Minimizing negative impacts is part of our agenda.
Yes, we spoke at the EDCVC board meeting about community values, so yes, that's, that's definitely on the table. I just wanted to speak to that this, this really is a, a joint effort of both cities and, and county and the private sector in the funding and that City of Thousand Oaks has said a yes and City of Simi Valley has said a yes and City of Oxnard. And so, we, we have buy-in. And I think Bruce touched on a couple of the key things, looking at making our county user-friendly. We're, we're right in the line of, of opportunity for the filming industry. And to also look at if, if there can be a similar permit application that's similar across the board, that, that makes it friendlier. And, and, and the important part about this position is that the person who will provide this service will be collecting information that will then prove the investment is worthy of, of our, our few dollars and also that there's value added. And working closely with the Economic Development Roundtable, which is that table most of the EDs from the cities sit on and monthly and they talk about opportunities. And to have the Lodging Association step up to the plate and put monies in speaks to the heads in the beds count that everybody would like to see as a value to putting these dollars in. So, I, I certainly, and the, and the collaborative certainly supported this, so move the recommended action.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Chair Foy. Just to echo a bit, in terms of RMA, Chris Stevens and Kim Prilhart have worked very hard and I think the permit processing timeline is, is very good. I think it's a couple of days or maybe even a day in some cases, so that's very positive. And I know they're working with Bruce and his team to develop that website to where you'll have a map.
That's right.
And you click on a location and it will take you to that permit processing. I think that's the idea and so it's sort of one-stop shopping for them there. And just to echo again, having EDCVC and Bruce and his team, it's great to have a trusted partner to coordinate this and send that message out there to the industry that we want your, we want to work with you and that there'll be accountability in the agreement. So, there'll be performance reports back to the EDCVC and to your board, so.
Mr. Chair, Kristi, thank you too. And just to share, Bruce, this is only one of many businesses that we're trying to help, you know, so I just wanted to share that, you know, because there's quite a few, but thank you Kristi and.
Okay, let's all vote and, no, this is the right kind of business we want to bring its in. It's quick, it's temporary of its own, but they spend a lot of money. They do. Thank you. What's that? 40 rooms for weeks? That's, somebody's loving that during the summertime of film, that plays up, that's good. All right, so we've got some things to do with Soul Park.
Good morning, Chair Foy, members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Greg Bergman from the General Services Agency. Item 35 before you this morning pertains to Soul Park Golf Course. Before I get started on that, I wanted to mention that on June 19th, there will be a U.S. Open Senior Qualifying Event, which is a PGA-sponsored event at Soul Park Golf Course. That's the first one that we've had there in a number of years, so I wanted to recognize the golf court and the efforts towards that.
Well, they must be doing a tremendous job for them.
They are, of course, in spectacular condition right now, so especially given that this, this event is coming up.
Yeah.
Long, rough and fast green, so.
That's great.
Item 35 before you this morning is, we are asking that your board approve the amended Emery State Agreement and authorize the GSA Director to sign that agreement on your behalf. Essentially, what the, the changes are, are doing are clarifying the rent payment language within the agreement to make it a little bit easier for the calculation of, of certain items. We're also addressing furniture fixtures and equipment. The operator was issued equipment at the inception of the lease and The operator was issued equipment at the inception of the lease and this is helping us with how we handle that equipment at lease termination. Item three and four are asking for your approval to transfer the management agreement from Highlands Golf to York Golf Management and authorize the General Services Agency Director to sign that agreement as well.
I did have a question regarding the putting into the contract that we prohibit the use of anticoagulant rodenticides on the golf courses. I know we have an IP PM program. I'm just wondering if that's something that we could incorporate into it and that would not be objectionable to the new management?
Section eight does address pest control and it prohibits the use of any anticoagulants. Did you want something different in that?
No, that's great.
Perfect.
There you go. See, they were warned. Thank you for that.
And they've agreed to that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, that's great. Good, good, okay. Well.
Appreciate you incorporating that in there.
You bet.
And glad to see that our partnerships are working out pretty well.
Yeah.
It's good. And hope they do well on this tournament. That'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Public Works. He's a senior. He's a senior.
Chair Foy, Mr. Powers, Supervisors for the record, I'm Dave Fleischer with the Public Works Agency. As each of you are members of the, are commissioners on the Ventura County Transportation Commission, you're very well aware of the transit study, regional transit study adopted by VCTC last year, which included the provision for a memorandum of understanding, a memorandum of agreement for the East County operations. We've been working with the cities of Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, Moore Park, and Camarillo, had to get them all together there, to work that process for quite some time now. And while we're fairly close to having an MOA completed, it's not yet ready to present. So the purpose of this letter is to provide a general, the general concepts outlined in that MOA and to be able to put forth something to provide a positive update for the legislature. And the second item that's here in addition to receiving this is to authorize our CEO to sign a letter with the city managers to state that fact as it goes forward. That'll take any questions.
Questions, anybody? Good. Okay. Long time, huh? All right. Okay, then item thirty-seven, this letter's been filed at the request of the Ventura County Office of Education, the Early Child Development, Local Planning Council. It means the early childhood planning and the state requires all appointments to be by the local planning, which have Board of Supervisors approval. So we have candidates are listed here, Bridget O'Malley and Dr. Carla, Carlo Madera, Madera? For a two-year term. Second, okay. You know, one thing I gotta say, when Supervisor Bennett goes on vacation, we go through a quick meeting.
But I missed the PowerPoints.
Oh, you missed the PowerPoint. I think we.
Okay, thank you.
Since we are through our regular, I think we go to closed session. We have a half an hour, I think, until ten o'clock time certain. Can we do that?
Yeah, we can.
See if you can muster all your people together.
Just in case.
No announcement coming out of it?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll come back to, and we'll go to item number twenty-one. Judge Hints. Mr. Dursy wanted to be nice to you today.
Chairman Foy, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Stephen Hints, Ventura County's Treasurer, Tax Collector. My appearance today is to provide you with the report of investments for the period ending April thirtieth, 2013. There is no news. The, we're in the interesting status of the market, the bad economic news makes the stock market go up and interest rates go down. So you see yesterday's report, which was a bad manufacturing report, the stock market went straight up and interest rates faded off. Today, we expect to hear news from the Federal Reserve that may change everything for all anybody would know. We'll see. In the meantime, for the twenty-fifth straight time, we're reporting that your fund is ideally placed to take advantage of a rising interest rate market, something that I would like to be able to change someday to tell you that we are taking advantage of a rising interest rate market. Just one thing, I told you that we were gonna change the pie chart and on the last page of my document is a pie chart and I'm afraid, looking at it, that we've gone so far towards transparency that we can no longer see it at all. So I'm thinking that we're gonna try out a less detailed pie chart that will cover six major categories. Government agencies, of which our current investment is about seventy-six percent, commercial paper, which our investment is about thirteen percent, corporate medium-term notes, which our investment is about seven percent and rising slowly. Our pool investments, two-point-five percent, and government municipal notes and Yankee CDs are combined less than one percent. So I have suggested in the past that we're gonna make some changes that will, I hope, enhance yield at the same time we preserve our safety and liquidity. But you don't turn a one-point-nine billion dollar fund around right away when you're only investing five million a day, so we'll see how these things go. So this is a receive and file report.
I noticed that you're down a hundred million over you were last year at the same time. More people drawing more money out of this.
More withdrawals.
Yeah.
The, and I think I may have mentioned before, because the state has become, like all debtors, a slow pay, school districts especially are having to draw down their funds in anticipation of state revenues.
No, okay.
We will see a rise around July, June thirtieth to July fifth. We would expect significant deposits to be made as the school trans and even, very briefly, the county trans are deposited before they start paying bills out of those.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Can I ask a question too? Looking at the chart maturity distribution, it looks like there's a, you're looking at a longer term.
We.
Going up more in the two-year plus range?
Well, actually, no, the percentage of the fund that is in excess of two years has remained about the same. It, because it lumps, that figure lumps everything that's two years or more. So that, it looks like there's a bigger thing, but that's actually a combination of a full year's worth of maturities that show on that. But irrespective of the chart, yes, we have started buying more one and up to two-year maturity instruments.
So you can get above that quarter of a percent of return?
Well, my instructions in the Statement of Investment Policy are to not to chase yield and I do not propose to, but on the other hand, there's a little self-respect involved to try and make something.
Aren't we though looking, it seems like, you know, things went about as low as they're gonna go and that they're gradually starting to move up and so grabbing the long term at the low may not be as profitable as doing the shorter term when it's this low.
We're not buying anything that's a three-year. We're buying all, I'd have to look at the chart of purchases, but I don't think I bought anything that's actually over. I bought one medium-term note that's over two.
Right, so you're in agreement?
Yes, yeah. We're, our average days maturity is around two-forty. It's short enough that we can, and liquid enough that we can take advantage of any increases and we watch carefully to make sure that, that we're not missing anything.
Okay, so we have a vote and receive and file. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And then we have our budget presentation. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Foy, board members, county departments, as well as the public. So yes, today we're presenting the preliminary budget and just sort of a wrap-up of a lot of the reports that you've received throughout the year. And go on to the second slide there. I'm not sure who has the, there we go. Nope, there we go. Most as you've seen before, but the gist is, I think we like to emphasize is the rigorous process that we've gone through to get here. We do these sort of summary reports to you here, but it belies a lot of the work, the heavy lifting and the detail work that goes on between the departments, fiscal teams, and our offices' budget analysts for about the last six months or more. So there's an awful lot that goes into it. We want to make sure that, we know your board's aware of it, but we just want to keep it front and center. The challenges, in general, I think we all know what they are, but they've been fairly significant and really extraordinary. Come through a tremendous recession and we're seeing improvement, but it's slow, steady but slow. Increased demand for services from our community. Changes in state and federal reimbursement, and that's a nice euphemism, usually the changes are not necessarily positive. Retirement cost increases, nineteen million dollars next year, and that's on top of ten this year. So that's about thirty million over two years, as you can see, so. So if that wasn't enough, then there's these extraordinary, sort of once-in-a-generation transfers of responsibilities from the state to the counties, safety realignment, healthcare reform, social services. And then to add on top of that, something we know is important to your board and our county, is continued investment in infrastructure. So that's an awful lot on the team's plate out there, on the department's plate. So, but the positive result is that in spite of all that, your board has a structurally balanced budget. And I think that's, that's saying something, given all those challenges. Services maintained and even expanded, particularly in those areas of health, social services, and safety. Reserves actually increased and not drawn down for ongoing operation. We see, we're seeing a lot of that going on in other counties. We're not seeing that here, Knuckwood, and we're actually seeing it continuing to grow. The good budget practices of your board and the departments has led to the ability of the county to maintain its long-term credit rating, not just short-term. Short-term's important, but it's much tougher to get and maintain a long-term, a positive long-term credit rating. We got it and actually this year, as you know, managed to increase our long-term credit rating to the second highest with Moody's, which in this tough economic environment, particularly for governments, is quite an accomplishment. On top of that, rates and fees are generally flat and as we talked about before in our capital projects, significant investments have continued into technology and critical infrastructure.
Mr. Chair, I know, Michael, you're gonna probably mention, going back to the, and the long-term credit rating, that's gonna save us millions of dollars and I'm sure you're probably gonna share that with us if we progress.
Well, you're exactly right, Supervisor. That, that long-term credit rating, just on the hospital project alone, I think over the life of the project saved at least eight million, what would you say?
Yeah, it's, roughly speaking, we think it, conservative number, six-hundred thousand dollars a year just in being upgraded in that rating from, you know, in the Moody's.
Six-hundred thousand a year for thirty years.
We think about six-hundred thousand dollars a year in debt service savings.
Right.
It's significant, yeah.
And that's very significant, that's just only in the hospital project.
Exactly right.
But with other projects that we're gonna save money on because of the credit rating.
Yeah, that, we come to the market every now and then and so when we do see, we don't issue long-term debt that often, and this is a significant long-term debt that we did issue this last time around, we won't be issuing those kind of dollars again in the near future, at least if we're not projected to. So the good news is that we'll continue to see that six-hundred thousand dollars a year savings and if we do like refinance some old certificated participation, we'll see those same low rates.
And it goes back to the budget structurally balanced and all the, you know, the good work that we do here, conservative budgeting that we do here in the county.
Absolutely, and it comes back to your board and your fiscal policies that you've stood behind and made tough decisions when you need to make those tough decisions.
Not the least of which is the reserve fund.
That's right, absolutely.
And these just are the key budget data. I think this is all in the book, one-point-eight billion dollars, a little over that, up five percent, but there's significant issues and we'll discuss those. Two main items are the implementation of the Affordable Care Act and the full implementation of two thousand and eleven realignment. So we, full-time equivalent employees are up significant numbers in the Human Services Agency for the.
Can you break that up a little bit in the sense of, for the Obamacare Affordable Care Act, how many people we had to add for that?
There's about, at least two hundred, in, roughly speaking, about a hundred and eighty, I believe, in the Human Services Agency alone, maybe more, maybe less, right in that number. And then additional positions in the Healthcare Agency also. Not, I don't have the specific numbers, but out of the three hundred and twenty-six, majority are from those purposes.
Because realignment had a few, but not the.
Realignment had a number of them, but, and the reason we would see this, as part of that is last year's budget at this time, we did not have a lot of the realignment information, two thousand and eleven realignment information in the budget. We came back mid-year and added positions, added appropriations. So therefore, the adopted budget is a little bit lower than, if we would have known everything in two thousand, about two thousand and eleven realignment, we would have included it in last year's budget, we would have had probably twenty-five million dollars more in last year's budget. So there's a, there's a little bit of a, of a timing issue relative to that two thousand and eleven as far as the increases in the numbers, especially in the general fund, up to nine hundred and twenty-five million, you know, if we would have had the information, it would have just been up, you know, it wouldn't have been up the five and a half percent and we would only have in the two and a half to three percent range.
So, but most of it's the Affordable Care Act?
A lot, yeah. Most of it's the Affordable Care Act and of course, you know, county-wide nineteen million dollars is not insignificant relative, if it's eighty million dollar increase or from, I think it was one-point-seven-two or one-point-seven-three to one-point-eight-one, so one, about eighty, let's say eighty, ninety million dollar increase, twenty of that roughly is from the increase in retirement contributions. So, and then we have Affordable Care Act and we have the new realignment and the majority, again, is the Affordable Care Act, plus increased services. And I think we're gonna be discussing that a little more detail. Increased services at, at the medical center is a significant, significant portion of the increase county-wide. General fund, it wouldn't impact significantly.
Yeah, increases in services at the hospital, but also in the clinics. So part of that's driven by the Affordable Care Act, but a part of that's just driven by the need in the community and the expanding access in the clinic system in particular.
The general fund full-time equivalent's up two hundred and sixty-six. A majority of that, again, is the Affordable Care Act for the Human Services Agency as far as eligibility. And then general fund, general purpose revenue, up two-point-three percent. Not, not huge dollars, but certainly it's better than flat or going down, as we've had seen a few years ago.
Something else, just to highlight, because we've, it's been so long that budgets have been flat, in some cases reduced, but, so there are some areas where your board has approved some increases and this, next year's budget does recommend some increases in some of these areas where we know there's been need. So it's, it's not necessarily a lot, but I think it reflects a positive direction, I will say. So we just wanted to highlight those for you.
As far as the overview, again, is, again, we're trying to get program-level budgeting. That's one of our office's performance measures and we haven't quite hit a hundred percent, but we're getting there. I mean, we, we do have departmental budgeting at the program level, but the program-level performance measures, we're still, it's incremental, we're working on that throughout the process. So we will give examples a little later and we have a couple of examples of the performance measures.
We, just for the public purpose of listeners, will you give a, what that means, a difference of program-level budgeting?
Program-level meaning, for example, in our office, we have a number of different divisions. And my division, we have the human services, human resources division, we have the risk management division, we have labor relations division, so we have a number of different divisions. Instead of just budgeting at the county executive office level, we actually have program level. Each program has its own budget. So each program is budgeting its own, its own revenue, its own expenses, so. So therefore, we kind of drill down to a lower level relative, so we can have more information, more detail. So therefore, we kind of drill down to a lower level relative, so we can have more information, more detail. It's easier to determine where our real costs are, where our, not winners and losers, but where our costs are going up a little bit, maybe a little faster than other areas, and where we can reallocate dollars and get a better bang for the buck, those types of things.
Which I think is good, and this is what needs to happen, because then we gotta look at each department, see what we're doing in that department, and what we're doing, what we need to be doing, and then we budget for that. We just don't say, here's a whole bunch of money and throw it out. So I think it's a much better way of budgeting, it's more precise, and we can slice instead of, you know, down to the level. I think it's good for the public to understand that we're getting down to that detail, so it's just not, here's a lump sum money, do what you need to do. Why are you doing it? What for? What's the program you're doing it for, kind of?
And in the budget book, what we have is a kind of a summary schedule, for example, our office, and then it'll be, our budget is 1040. And then under that, there's a schedule of all the different programs within our budget, and they all add up to the total in the county executive office. So as far as the General Fund, each program is line item, is delineated in a kind of a summary schedule, and then each of those programs is detailed further in the budget. So that's why the budget book's gone up to seven or 800 pages versus 300 before.
And that's your second bullet point there, right, your performance measurements?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we now have, working on better software too, so that helps to keep track of all that too.
Well, we're working on the better software part. We have a new performance budget system that's gonna be part of the upgrade in the financial management system. Right now, Frank, a lot of it is done through database manipulation and downloading from the system and using non-perfect IT methods. But, so it takes a lot, more manual intervention than we would like to have, let's put it that way.
But the fiscal management system, electronic system that we're looking at is, that will deal with these kind of the smaller programs?
It will deal with it. We have it now, which is a matter of, the performance measures is where we have a little bit more difficulty identifying it specifically, so we have to kind of do some other gyrations within the computers. But the program-level budgeting, we do have that capability currently, and we hope to enhance it a little bit better within the new system.
Okay, always room for improvement, huh?
Absolutely, always room for improvement. We do incorporate a long-term strategic plan. Of course, we come to your board at least a couple of times a year for our five-year forecast, always trying to make sure that we're looking at things on a long-term basis and strategically. Peppera implementation, again, we're not seeing, we won't see significant impacts for next year at this time. However, we know that they're gonna be, continue to be a positive impact going forward. Right now, my latest numbers, and this is probably about a couple of weeks ago, we've already had 300 new employees in the county since January 1st, so we know we have, you know, that may not, they may not all be Peppera-based, but there's a number of those that will be new employees that are under the new Peppera system, so that's significant. Out of 8,000, it's, you know, a drop in the bucket, but as we go through the year, we probably are gonna turn over 500, 600 people a year. That's our normal process. So it won't take that long to actually see Peppera have some sort of impact.
That's all the new employees, right?
Yes. As of January 1st, 2015. And this does incorporate, our new budget incorporates, new, the 2011 realignment and revenue costs. Here's an example of the performance measures. These are just a couple items we took. The Assessor, for example, their annual review of exempt properties, their benchmark is 95%, okay? They, their actual for 1112, that's last year, was 98%. So they're above their benchmark, their target for this year is 95%, and they expect it to be at 98% again for this year. And again, they're setting their target 95% for next year. So that's just an example, an example of a percentage-based benchmark. The benchmarks are basically, the department determines what the benchmarks are, the department determines what they want to try to measure, what they think is meaningful. And for the Assessor's Office, at least the exempt properties, they want to review those on an annual basis. They think it's important for them to review those things, and they may be required mandated, but they certainly think it's important to review those on an annual basis. Child support call wait time is another...
So Paul, that might be too high or too low, and then you can adjust accordingly, is that right?
That's right. If they feel like, if they feel like we need to move that up to 98% in the out-years, and that way we can try to improve upon it, and it gives them a benchmark and a baseline to where they want to improve from there. If they think 95 is the real good number, then they'll continue to keep it at 95. If they want to push themselves further, or they think that, you know, this 95 was their initial number, and that, because they haven't measured it before, so now they're gonna start measuring it and say, you know what, we think we can hit 99, or 98 every year, so they'll...
Or they might need more resources to get from...
That could be, and that's when the diminishing return, as far as investment, right?
That's right, okay.
Child support call wait time is another benchmark. It's a minute, three-minute benchmark. And that's a state, I think that's a state average, is what they have as their benchmark. 1112 actual was a little more than a half a minute, so their, and their target is one minute, and estimated for this year is a minute, and they're gonna set that target again for next year. So their target is below their base, the baseline. So they're setting a target below the statewide average. They are saying that we can do better than the statewide average, and so, and they're trying to meet that. And they expect to meet that this year at the one minute, and then when, at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have the actual numbers, which will roll into next year's budget. So we're always a year behind on as far as those setting targets.
And I was just gonna say, at .58, they don't leave a lot of room for improvement.
Exactly, that's a problem.
But they do a great job, yeah, right.
When you're too good, there's not as much room for improvement. That's why our office, we have lots of room. But the county executive fund balance, here's the benchmark is 15%, and we've established that, and your board has established that benchmark at 15%. Actual for 11 and 12, again, that's 1112 last year, it was at 10. We estimate it to be, this year, we rounded up to 11%. And the target, overall target for those two years is still 15%, doesn't change, that's our target, okay? We haven't met it, but that doesn't mean we're not trying to meet it. And we think the target is reasonable, it's based on GFOA standards, you know, government finance, accounting, aside. Government Finance Officer Associate, whatever, yeah.
This is the reserve fund, correct?
This is the reserve fund, right, that we're trying to hit at 15%. That's the benchmark, and the benchmark is based on an outside, in this case, it's based on an outside criteria and our analysis of those outside criteria. Target is still at 15, and we estimate for this year-end to be at 11%.
And that's not a dollar amount?
That is not a dollar.
Because that keeps growing as our budget gets bigger?
That's right, that's right.
Makes it more challenging.
Yes, it does. As your budget grows, your number has to grow in order to just maintain the same percentage.
I think this, you know, we've talked about, there's no secret to what's happening. It's just good hard work by the managers and the employees, reducing costs and looking for revenue opportunities. A lot of the lean-six projects that you're seeing, those are not one-time savings, those are ongoing savings every year that reoccur and help us sustain services. The last point there too, well, actually two points, one, strategic workforce management, that's basically not filling positions and doing more with less and so forth. Well, we said that a lot for a long time, right, so that just gives you a sense, it's been going on a long time. So that's a lot of hard work over a long period. The last one is maintaining service and supply costs. So there's zero increases allowed for in the budget. What basically means any increases in the CPI or services and supply costs, the managers and those departments for the second or third year in a row are completely absorbing those. We touched on this a little bit, some of the increases were, in addition to all these responsibilities, there's expanded services at the VCMC clinics, and a lot of that, of course, has put us in good position to be ready for the, for both Human Services Agency and Healthcare Agency to be ready for the Affordable Care Act implementation. And then you've heard many reports on all the work on implementation on safety realignment. Last point is, you know, we talked about the ISF rates and keeping them flat, and the notion of reducing costs, and a lot of that's gone on, but another way of reducing rates is to actually increase your revenue base. So you spread your overhead, you reduce your cost per unit, and you do that by having good customer service. I think we're seeing that from IT and GSA and all the departments. And just to give you a sense, on the recent VCFS contract that you just referenced Supervisor, by doing that in-house, that's gonna save, that hosting cost's gonna save the county about 100,000 a year. Expanding the wireless network, like when IT, the sheriff chose the IT over a private vendor to do that because of the excellent customer service and the level of service agreement, that helped enhance their revenues and lower their cost per units, and all the departments benefited from that. And you can see GSA and their project management, because they've expanded their services, they've lowered their project management cost to the savings to the departments about 450,000 a year. So it's not just cutting, it's, you know, good customer service, innovating, and expanding services, where it makes sense to do that.
How does that work? Housekeeping overhead reduced by expanding services?
Right, so they used to contact that out, and now their GSA is expanding and providing that. Exactly, right.
And in-house sense of benefits too, because they're here, which is, I think, is important.
And then as far as our pie, this is a, we'll have a series of pie charts here. This is general, this is the countywide appropriations. And you see, the majority is it right there, 925 million in the General Fund. The next largest, the enterprise at 483, and the majority of that enterprise fund is the Medical Center. And then we break that, then as far as General Fund, out of the 925 million that we know from the General Fund standpoint, about 406 million is, these are revenue sources, intergovernmental revenue, state and federal funding, $281 million in taxes, and the three main, the three main ones, and then the charges for services is 155 million. And this is all General Fund revenue sources. And then intergovernmental revenue, we've broken down, what we've done is we've taken the 406 million here in governmental revenue and broken it down a little bit more for you. See, the federal money is in the red, the state is in blue, and then the little piece is other. But a good chunk of that, as we break down the state intergovernmental revenue, it's not all just, here's some money from the state. A lot of the, a lot of what is considered to be from a budgetary and accounting standpoint is frankly, money that we should get anyway. For example, Prop 172, that's the yellow, that's the yellow one down here at the bottom, $62 million. I don't consider that to be a state, state subvention to the counties. I consider that to be money that goes through the state, that has to be accounted for as a, as state revenue, but it's really local revenue that's, that goes through the state. Same with some of this other, like 1991 realignment, the state just realigned dollars that should have come to us to begin with, they realigned programs and gave us new state, and they call it state, state support. So when you get down to the state support, it's a lot smaller number than, 70 million is really the other state aid, which isn't specifically identified for replacement dollars that the state had sent us anyway. So they do send us a good chunk of dollars for, as state aid, but a lot of that is to match federal dollars coming down.
The rest of it is what, our regular tax dollars or property tax dollars?
Like, a lot of it's sales tax-based, local sales tax-based, Prop 172, for example. That should, you know, in my opinion, just come right down, right down to the county, not through the state. But that, it's accounted for through the state, so it comes down as a state.
Makes them look like they're doing more for us.
That's right.
Do you include the, what's owed to us by the state?
No, we do not.
Do you keep that somewhere in our budget so we know?
It's not in the budget per se, it's in, it's in the accounting records of the order controllers where it is. It's as, it's a receivable out there, and it's about 30 million, I think, is the latest number, yeah.
Is that coming down at all?
No, they're barely paying annual, so it may be going up.
You know, the state supposedly is doing better, and you would think that it's come that time.
Right, when they talk about paying off debt, paying off their wall of debt and those types of things, we want to make sure that our county debt that they owe us is also included. And I think county, I think statewide, it's probably close, it's over a billion dollars that they would have to pay to counties to reimburse them for the old SB 90 claims.
Not even on a payment plan, huh?
Not even on a payment plan yet. We're hoping, we're, I think that, I think the governor does recognize, at least, at least they recognize the fact they owe us the money. That's, that's good news.
You mean when the, when the governor said we have a little more that came in than we had budgeted, the legislature just didn't say, go pay off those counties?
Not yet, we're working on that.
And just, is it growing? I mean, are we continually getting more, paying more?
It's stable at about 30 million. It's been 30 million for a couple, few years.
Thank you.
So it was, a few years ago, like five years ago, is in the 22, 23 million. So it did, it did grow for a few years after the, after, you know, when they, when they stopped paying completely, and they said we're gonna defer, and they came up with all these different rules and definitions of what was, what they were gonna pay and what they weren't gonna pay. So, and then it came down to the county whether or not they want, counties want to eliminate certain programs, so. This is the General Fund Preliminary Appropriations. You see the big, the big pieces of the pie. I don't think it's any shock to anybody, it's, it's Public Safety and Health and Human Services. From appropriation standpoint, they're very similar, the rest are not as significant relative to the overall. But that's what, you know, the county, from an overall standpoint, Health, Human Services, and Safety Departments are the major function. Here comes down to the appropriations from a salaries, employee benefits, largest piece of the pie. This is a different, different look at the nine, this is 25, 925 million from a programmatic standpoint, and this is from a, call it line item or a type of expenditure. And the major 500, almost 550 million of the 925 million is salaries and employee benefits. Salary, this is again, salaries and full-time equivalent, we've shown this to you every year. Going up a little bit, first time in a while it's gone up with any, at any significance. This is the unassigned fund balance, this is our 15% target number we talked about. You see the blue lines are the actual dollars, the red line is the percentage. The 138,750 on the left axis, that is the 15% equivalent of 925 million. So if we were gonna be at 15%, we'd have 138,750,000 dollars set aside. We aren't there yet, we're at about 98 million, which is a little, a little bit, a little bit above 10%. So we are still looking at increasing that number, and the good news is, it did increase from year to year and just increased the last several years. But as a percentage, you see, it's dipped down just a hair. And it's not, not significant, but as a percentage, and part of that is because our appropriations went up significantly in the current year. And so when the state and federal government start adding additional dollars that we have, we are required to spend for those programs that they're supporting, it increases our appropriations, increases our revenue, but from a fund balance standpoint, it, as a percentage, goes down. The good news is, it's well above our negative that we keep showing back here. This is just information for your board. The attachment B to the preliminary budget letter as we go through the process. Estimated revenues from the recurring grants, 58 million, and required matching funds. See, we get a lot of leverage on those grants that we're asking your board to approve. And then the multi-year grants, same thing, good leverage. Attachment C of the preliminary budget letter is our analysis and summary of the capital projects. These are the projects that are in process right now. Recommended priority projects, again, our board, we talked to your board a couple of weeks ago in this regard. We came to your board with our listing of capital projects and long-term debt. And these are the ones that are priority projects in the attachment C. They're detailed a lot more out than the...
And you dropped off the East County Government Center.
Yes, we did. We still working on that one.
It used to be on here.
Yeah, we took, because of the, because it's so, so far out right now, according to the five-year plan.
Was it closer in the future before, when it was on it?
At one point in time, we're actually evaluating it, so, and then it got, the cost of construction right now is so high relative to purchasing.
Existing buildings.
Yes, and that's, that's one of the key factors.
It'll be the senior Dersie Center, then.
State budget. Supervisor Long, Mike talked about state budget a little bit this morning, and I think this is not news to anybody, we're stating, we're still waiting for the state to adopt their final budget. We'll see what happens, and we'll adjust accordingly as we always do.
I'm sorry, on the list of capital projects, the Todd Road Jail solar project, it has a 4.3 million dollar price tag. I would assume that that pays for itself over the years, right?
It will pay for itself over the years. It does, solar projects are still, take a long time to have a return, but it will eventually pay for itself, right? State budget, LAO, does say, does seem, it's pessimistic, but we would like to see the, we would like to see the governor take a billion of that and pay down their debt to the counties, but we don't think that's gonna happen. These are just some of the key potential future impacts. Hopefully, we've covered most of this information with your board in the past. I don't think there's anything shocking, but we just want to make sure we keep it on your radar relative to the future. relative to the future.
Just to add one point on there, in terms of the sequestration, of course, we are seeing some impacts to the airports and also to the emergency shelter grants from HUD, CDPG funds, so we are seeing some of that start to play out here locally.
This is actually our list of recommendation that's in the, in the budget letter, asking you to receive the budget, publish notice, schedule budget hearings, approve all the grant. There's a number of grants, I think there's several hundred grants that will prevent, that prevents us from having to come to your board by, through this process, so just a lot of paperwork that's, that's saved for the, from the department's standpoint by having the, your board approve the grant application acceptances at this point in time. Receive and file the capital planning committee recommendations, and then direct our office to make revisions, and then approve the tobacco settlement funding allocations, so.
And with that, just to, just to recap, despite those challenges with your board's support and our, our county leadership team and county family, we have a balanced budget, and we're maintaining services, and we're in good shape to meet the increasing demands for safety, health, and social services. So appreciate all the good work by the departments and Paul and his team, and with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just from a mechanical standpoint, we'll, you know, the final budget hearings begin on Monday in the afternoon, one-thirty, June seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
So we'll be back with, you know, all the, any adjustments to this budget, our, our recommended adjustments to our, to our preliminary budget. We'll go through the list of departments, if the departments have any, if you have any questions for the departments at that time, they'll be, they'll be available to answer questions relative to their budgets. If a department wants to make a last-second presentation relative to their budgets, you know, that, the afternoon is for that. In the past, if you recall, we would have all the departments make the presentations on that afternoon. Now we've tried to make it so that the departments do it well in advance, so your depart, your board has some time to digest what the departments are saying rather than try to cram everything into Monday afternoon, so. Then Monday, after Monday afternoon is done, Monday night opens public hearing at six, and then your board can, can do your deliberations. So that's, you know, that's the process.
I appreciate Paul, and I appreciate the system of having them come early and go through it, and I agree that Mike and Paul and, God, you guys have done a tremendous job working with, I've heard some great comments from the different leaderships in the different departments that you're, you've been very open and direct with them, and they've worked very diligently to try to make it all work for everybody, and it's, it's been generous in what you can be generous in and work through it. I know the, as I see Mr. Cromback out there, the Sheriff's Department is happy with what's happened, and they've done a tremendous job to try to work through their budgets, and that's, that's the kind of collaboration, I think, which is, makes this county different, is that we're not fighting over it, we're just trying to get it done, and we're going to be in a balanced situation, we're going to try, make sure that we're continuing to put money away in reserves, we're going to continue to provide the services to the public that we promised and that we have to do. And so as I look through this, it looks like it's, you've got a lot of good work that's been done, and I just, going back to what you said, Mike, is that the team out there, which is every employee across all different agencies, have done a tremendous job to figure out how to control their costs. I mean, that's the thing that's been going on for years now, and we're starting to see that payout, really payout well. Otherwise, if we didn't have the fifteen million, you know, where would you be if you had fifteen million dollars more in costs as we had, what, three or three years ago or something like that? We'd be, then you would be fighting over cutting and cutting and trying to figure it out, and it, it becomes very difficult. And as pension costs are going to continue, it's going to be a, a difficult situation, but it's great to see us in these situations that, you know, we're not having to say, we've got a little bit, bring back all the laid-off people, we don't have that. Now, we have some things, you know, the federal government's passed a few things, they're adding millions of dollars to our costs, and hopefully they're going to pick up some of that cost for us, but it's things that we got to do based on what the law is, and but we're still in a position that we can absorb the thirty million dollars that the state hasn't paid us. I'd hate to be in a position where we didn't have reserves and having to deal with those kind of issues, so. And going back to Supervisor Zarago's idea, that working very hard diligently to increase the rating to the public, what's your rating mean? Well, you talk about six hundred thousand dollars a year over thirty years on a mortgage, that's a huge amount of money, that's a huge amount of money the public is saving, because at the end of the day, there's only so much money, you're going to cut services if you don't have the money. And as it is now, as you said, services aren't being cut, in some areas have been expanded, the sheriff is still able to do what they're doing, the fire is still, the hospital's still able to give those services to the public that's been expected, so I got to congratulate you on the hard work that's gone into this to make this work.
I was going to mention that too, you know, just to expand on what you said, you know, I just want to thank staff, you know, Michael and the rest of the, of the staff, you know, and we have a balanced budget, which I think is extremely important. The services are maintained, you know, that's important to, that's what we're here for, is to serve the public, you know, and they're with no cuts at all, in fact, we expanded services in some areas, which I think is extremely important, and no significant cuts. I think it's extremely important that, that the public understand that, that we're maintaining that service as required by the, and expected by the, our residents, you know, so I think we're doing a good job, and, and a credit rating, again, you know, I just, I think it's excellent because when we took the trip to New York and we talked to the, to the Saturn Impores and those individuals, I just remember the tough questions asked, so we're right in line, and they gave us a blessing, and they went to rating, and, and so I, I just want to commend staff for doing a good job, all the staff, you know, so. I think we're going in the right direction.
A couple of things, on the cautionary note on page eleven, it's a pretty broad brush, talking about the things that are looming out there possibly, and we've talked about some of them today with healthcare and with, well, with healthcare reform, but it also says, impacts to human services and public safety. I, I think, and it's, I appreciate that we've worked closely with public safety, all of the public safety family and, and supporting them where we can, but knowing that we have out there yet the continued push-down to us of AB 109 and realignment, and, and although the costs are, the revenues coming from the state are good this year, the pressure's on crowding in the jail, the pressure's on the governor and his battle with the three-judge panel, federal judge panel, I think that that, can't underestimate that we might, there might be some quick movement to the negative this year, so just to, and I know the team's on top of it, but.
But I appreciate that Supervisor, because, yeah, it's a line and a slide, but it doesn't capture all the work that's going on in safety realignment with the sheriff and probation and district attorney. The reports that you've heard before, the huge ramp-up, that they had the increased risk that they're taking on each individual employee.
Right.
It's a lot more work, it's a lot more risk. I think it's good for our community, because I'd rather have our own folks doing it, so that's good, but having said that, it's a huge work, workload for them. HSA having to ramp up a hundred and ninety new eligibility staff.
Right.
Having to hire, train, you know, and put those folks out there, that's a huge job to do all that, so there's a ton of work going on to implement all of these things all at one time, so.
And then on the second one, on the, this is on the attachment A, speaking about unfunded liabilities with two unfunded and unrecorded liabilities, management, retiree, health payment, speak to that a little bit, speak to that if you can, if you see any change or shift in that as we move into both the exchange and the Affordable Healthcare Act, and, and I know that this comes under our, the retiree subsidized medical program comes under our insurance pool and system.
Right, those are two, what we call other post-employment benefits, OPEPs.
Right.
We, there are the, the management, management plan where if you worked, I think it was prior to two thousand and five, I think it was cut off in two thousand and five, so if you're a manager before a certain point in time, you get one year of, of the equivalent to, when you retire, you get one year equivalent to the Ventura County Healthcare Plan cost for each five years of service, so you get that dollar a month for, for, right now it's about seventy-two hundred dollars a year, or in that range, for a post-employment benefit. You, so you would get that for five years. That number, the actuarial liability on that is about fifteen million dollars, and we are paying that down every year, and our payment on that is about a million and a half dollars a year. So from an accounting standpoint, we're paying that down every year, we don't have a, we don't have a true unfunded, we have an unfunded liability, but we don't have, it's not growing, it's, it's pretty flat. So that, that particular one is not growing, that particular liability is not growing, it's flat, we expect to actually to top out and then kind of decrease as the employees who were hired after two thousand and fives, you know, start retiring and those types of things.
Okay.
So that number, we expect to maintain at about a million and a half dollars a year, roughly speaking. The other one, the, what we call the subsidized medical program, it's a unfunded liability from an accounting standpoint, the problem there is that, and we have to include in our financial statements, but the problem there is that it's really a subsidy that's provided to the, to the retirees, as we pool the retirees into our health program, into our health program, it decreases the retirees' costs significantly, like by seventy-five percent. But what it does is it increases the current employees' costs, let's say by about five percent, not huge dollars, but the, but, so the cost for the employee to purchase a plan, a medical plan, let's take the Ventura County Healthcare Plan, may go up by five percent because of, because of the pooling of the retirees. Now, the cost is, doesn't come back to the county, the cost is actually subsidized by the employees. So from a, from a liability standpoint, it's not a significant liability from the county's standpoint, because it's not a vested benefit, and it's also not obligation of the county. So at, at any point in time, it's, the county wouldn't be required to pay off that debt. But from an accounting standpoint, this is where it gets a little bit Gatsby-ish, Government Accounting Standard Board, actually, I called back there several years ago to question this on this issue, but they have their checklist relative to what has to be accounted for from an unfunded liability standpoint. So we've included it on this list, we're not concerned about it, the overall unfunded liability is about seventeen million dollars from an accounting standpoint, but if we were to pre-fund that account, that seventeen million dollars out of some pot of money, it would never go anywhere. It would never be spent because it's not a county obligation. So that's where it's a, it's a more of an accounting issue than a budgetary issue, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it really is just, it's just an accounting issue. In many ways, I would look at it almost as a benefit, as an asset, I don't look at it as a liability. It's a nice benefit for our retirees. It's really looking at the fact that, and we did look at this before, we did an analysis to see what would happen if we decoupled them, and just rated each plan separately with the current active employees and the retirees, and as Paul said, it was fairly minimal to the employees, but it was a huge impact to the retirees, and we looked at it and said, that just doesn't make sense. So that's really all it is, and we certainly don't look at it as a liability.
But we also do need to include that, because from a rating agency standpoint.
They have to see it.
They very much evaluate our other post-employment benefits, so we need to make sure that they know that we know what they are, and we know, they know that we know that they're not significant to our, to our overall operations, so that's kind of why we, because the rating agencies are very interested in OPEPs. Some counties have OPEPs, other post-employment benefits for services for medical benefits that are greater than their unfunded liability in the retirement system.
Oh, yeah. Now, the rating agencies are pleased when they see our report in these areas, definitely.
Okay, thanks.
I have a couple of comments, too. One, I, just looking at the organizational charts, my kudos to the, it's a Treasury Tax Collector's Office, which puts on top the people of Ventura County, they are the boss, and then it flows down from there. But on the county's organizational structure, it's the electorate and then the Board of Supervisors, and we're, we're not just answerable to the electorate, we're, I like that, to the people of Ventura County, so might just throw that in there. But in regards to the numbers that you've presented to us, I appreciate that the different departments are having to hold the line, that we didn't have, we actually had reductions in rates and fees in the general fund accounts, that we're not having any increases in supplies, for example. Also, understanding that when we look at the capital budgets and the priorities that are put forward, I, it would almost be helpful to have a matrix, in a sense, because some of these, like I mentioned, the solar projects, they pay for themselves, some of them are coming from enterprise funds, where there are funds available for it, but just if, and by putting all the projects together, it's hard to get an idea about what revenue sources are out there, what's being paid for by grant funds, and some of these projects, the priority is based on whether those revenues are available. We also have a good opportunity, because we are in such good fiscal straits, that we can kind of bob and weave and, and have some flexibility, so when we have funds available, for example, for a building along with the Todd Road Jail, and that's, that's a big project, thirty-six million dollars for a medical mental health unit there, you know, if they become grant funds available, that we can, you know, grab those up, but it would be nice to have a little bit more information comparing these different priority projects, knowing where the funding sources are.
I think what we, I think that's a good point, I think what we can do is, in our, in our Schedule C, we can expand that a little bit more and give some verbiage to that, to that effect, and determine, you know, kind of why, why they're on a priority. In other words, for example, the sheriff's medical facility, not only is it needed, but there's also the possibility of, of grants. So if you get grant funding for, for a project, it certainly will move its way up in the system.
Right.
If we have, if we got a grant for the East County facility of, you know, for eighty million or a hundred million dollars, we could get that up pretty quickly, but.
That a challenge for Supervisor Park?
That's right.
But then some of them are required by law, like the electronic medical records, and some of those, you have that understanding, but it would be good to just see them and have some way to compare and determine why they are prioritized, as you say.
Sure, we can, we can add, we can expand on our, on our analysis in that regard. We put the pros and cons in there, we kind of give a little bit of detail on what the project is, but certainly we can expand that attachment C to include some of that detail of why, kind of why they were selected as priority problems, priorities.
And why they were taken off.
Right.
And we will do that, and I would say, most of the projects that are listed there have some funding source, and they're paid for in one of two ways, either there's an outside funding source that's going to help pay for it.
Yeah, like the, the airports, for example, you know, that there, a lot of that is paid for completely.
Airports, harbor, hospital, and now the sheriff's projects, and sometimes that's a better way of using the funds that we already have. Should we continue to pay leases for space out there, or have our own better facility closer?
And, and just, sometimes, you know, a building becomes available that's low-cost and, as we found, cheaper to buy than to rent.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think a good example is right in the middle of the purchase of building and land at nineteen eleven Williams Drive. We're now, we're analyzing that right now, and what we've done is we've looked at that number, and we've, we've got committed leases over the next ten years that, that are locked in, and so we can, if we purchase this building, it's going to be cheaper in the long run than leasing the building, certainly, especially if we expand the entire building, to the entire building footprint and those types of things. So that's what we're, you know, we go through that process, probably just need a little more detail, let your, let your board know that we've, we've done that analysis and that process and, and why, why we come to that.
And maybe timeframe, too.
Right.
Paul, like, for example, the runway for the taxi, for the airport, it's ninety and ninety-five percent funded by the FAA, which is, I think, is important, you know.
Okay, anything else? Is that enough? Till next Monday?
Let me ask you, is that enough?
That's it, well, that's great, appreciate that, thanks for the update, and we just have a receiving file?
No, this is a, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, today, yeah, we have, I'm sorry, we have to receive it.
It has also been really helpful to have, as we do each of the department's presentations, and getting a good understanding of what their needs are, and then have them present that when they come forward, and it's.
Yeah, I think it's worked well for the last, I agree.
Okay, so we have all these that are under recommendations, one through seven.
So the recommendation approves it?
Yep, that we approved, so, okay, so then we'll do it on Monday.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Now we're getting behind. All right, we're going to make it up.
But it did say receive and file.
I know it did.
And recommendations.
It's a lot shorter than saying all that other stuff.
And the recommendation.
Okay, we'll move to item twenty-four, public hearing adoption of resolution approving the engineer's report. Somebody, oh, here he is.
So I just say move approval?
Well, we've got to make up a lot of time here, so.
We do this every year, right?
Good morning, it'll still be as rapid as I possibly can. For the record, I'm Dave Fleisch from the Public Works Agency Transportation Department, Supervisors Chairman Foy and Mr. Powers. What you have in front of you is the Santa Rosa Road Assessment District, this is year eight of ten, we've done this times before, and essentially it's to cover the agreed-upon portion of costs for the individuals out in Santa Rosa Valley for the synchronized signal system that we have out there, and I have with me Mr. John Bliss, who's the engineer who prepares this, if you have any questions.
Covering the cost.
So this is year eight of ten, huh?
Yes, two more to go.
So only have to do this two more times?
Absolutely.
More or less, and, exactly, actually, is there, if we do other assessments in the future, do we need to have these reports?
I think with this one, because of the complexity of it, we needed to do it, so I don't know, John, if you have any-
Enough, it's a state law.
Good morning. Yeah, Supervisor Parks, yeah, it absolutely is. It's, it's dictated by Prop 218. The, most commonly, you see landscaping and lighting assessment districts for development. And really, the, the laws have gotten stricter, the courts have gotten more aggressive in pushing on this and looking for an engineer's report. A couple of, a couple of resolutions typically an engineer's report and then ending with a noticed public hearing, which is what we're doing today. It is routine and administrative, but it's absolutely required.
And it's required to be annual?
It's required to be annual. Every time, really, an assessment is an annual mechanism. And so it only happens when you do this. You can't really impose the, unlike a tax, you can't impose an assessment without this process each year.
Under 218.
Can it, well, what, it's a public hearing and it's confirming something. What if you did have a group protesting? Is there a, I mean-
Yeah, good question. Essentially, it, the assessment only goes forward with a positive vote by your board. So let's say some homeowners came up, and this is the example I always give, it's completely hypothetical, and they discovered oil within Santa Rosa Road, and they no longer needed to assess themselves. The oil was going to pay for the synchronized streetlights. In that case, you all could say, "Okay, we're not going to assess it this year, we'll use this other revenue source." Now, I don't think that's going to happen, but-
I don't know. There might be some oil under Santa Rosa Road. Okay, well, thank you for that information.
That's why we have the public hearing for that.
Okay. So if any more questions, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers on this public hearing? No, no speakers, then we will close the public hearing. Nobody else has any questions? Okay, we'll make a motion. We have a motion. Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Long.
And, and they are very appreciated, those synchronized signals on Santa Rosa Road, and, and other areas look at them jealously. They want one, too.
But if you can get on it, you can get through it, if you can get on, to write in the thing, it's good. Thank you, guys. Okay, we have number 25, receiving file presentation by the Human Services Agency, Adult and Family Services. We've got a five-minute presentation, that's good.
Absolutely, five minutes.
This took so much work, so let's take a little time.
So, thank you, Barry Zimmerman, Human Services Agency, Chair Foye, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm here to present on the status of the HMIS system. If you recall, about a year ago, we came before your board to novate a contract over and the system over to us from United Way and to reshape the system a little bit for the benefit of the homeless programs throughout the county. And, and so we'd just like to give you an overview of that and the progress that we're making so far today. I think the importance of why, why it's important to present and give you the knowledge is that this is a centralized database of information that is required under HUD now in order to receive funding. And so the integrity of this system is important for all providers under the continuum of care entitlement areas, both in Oxnard and our own Ventura County one, in order to receive funding, this system has to be viable and, and running. So that's the, the importance of it. It stands for the Homeless Management Information System, or HMIS is the way we refer to it there. The purpose is to provide a standardized reporting, aggregate, aggregating data to culminate in, in reports and information that can best communicate what the services and how effective the services are, and more importantly, to try to integrate services amongst the various providers, so there's not gaps in, in the service continuum for, for homeless individuals. Much of the efforts that have been done here have improved overall the efficiencies of the system, such as in the homeless count and so forth. Now, we've eliminated some manual processes, so we're, with that, due to our ability of, of getting the system up and running. And there's future items that I'll cover that will be a benefit to the program as a whole. Now, the importance is that also the HMIS system is an integral part of the 10-year homeless plan. It is a section in there that has an outcome requirement, if you will. And the goal in the plan is that all homeless service providers will be using this system, whether they're HUD-funded or non-HUD-funded, so, so the integration of that information can be captured in the HMIS system, and which will benefit for both providing rich information for the providers as well as providing data for those that go after grants and other resources are able to pull information on a regional basis in that regard there. This is what we've done as an administrator of the system, and I give much credit, I did not work on this hands-on. On staff do a tremendous job there, and we have a couple of them here in the audience. We have Marissa Mach, who is manager over that, and Titian Maeda, who's our technical expert that have teams and people that have really bundled this project together and to get it up and going. The, this is kind of the role and responsibilities of the administrator there, and the four bullets at the bottom are enhancements that we've created or have implemented associated with the system that weren't being offered prior. So technical project management is that we actually physically go out and we manage the, the providers themselves to set them up, to organize their business flows in the system that would be compatible for their entity and their service flow. And, and so that would now make it easier for them to participate in, in the system as an all, as, as a whole. Report generation was another significant area of improvement. As you know, reports in, in, in an IT system are complex oftentimes in the database, but our team was effectively able to maximize much of the reporting requirements of the system. So those are some of the enhancements that are going on now. This is a picture of the webpage that we've launched, that, so, so this is the access point for those providers and those that need services relative to homeless, the HMIS system. It's a good-looking page, and it's very functional as far as the providers go in access to the information. We're able to, not only, we're able to post information, post information from us to them, so the communication is more pure and it doesn't have to trickle through a grapevine activity, but it's more of a direct method there. These are the agencies that participate right now in the HMIS system there. We've added some new programs and new agencies associated with it as we're rolling this out, and we will anticipate incorporating many more associated with that. So Behavioral Health has a new program that they've now set up and are using it, the HMIS system, as well as help of OHI, who's a non-HUD-funded entity, is participating in it. And there's, the list continues with the other providers that, that are currently on the, on the system. All right. So this is kind of the, what, what the growth that has occurred, as well as the improvements with this system there. We've included, we've started to reach out to get non-HUD providers on there. We have three so far, and we're, we're continuing to outreach to get 100 percent. Now, we're, we're still working because the continuum of cares will be the one to define what entities would be a homeless provider or not, and so as soon as that they give that definition, then we'll have a, a, a hard target to work for to get all those entities enrolled and participating. But the, due to this, and I, I do believe that it's showing value of tracking this and being a case management system, we're seeing programs expand within it there. So we've gone from 55 programs to 81 programs. We've doubled the users that are on it today, and that, the, the amount of data and, and information is increasing in the system, and that's what we would hope for, and that was the objective of bringing it over, to allow that to happen. There. So this is some of the benefits of the system and how, how it works. And I think I'll highlight that part of MIS systems in general, the value of them is to glean the rich data out of them. So you know where you've been, what you're doing, and where you can go from there. If you notice, we've taken the information loop of only serving nine reports out of the previous system when we first got it to over 85 different reports that individuals can use in, in the system to manage their programs. So that, that's a huge benefit for the community as well as for the COCs who are trying to manage all the HUD funding. Now have a wealth of information, and not only is the information just in the database, it's accessible now to do that. The team has done a good job to also, that they do these reports and that you can, we can customize reports based on, on their needs and so forth. This is just a look here, just to give you an idea. This is the, the system here and how it works. You know, an administrative menu bar and then fields associated with their workflow and so forth. This is a report scheme, screen here. We went from nine to over 85 different reports in total now, so that means we, we've incorporated 76 different report formats in order to allow that to happen. And we show this to demonstrate, it's not, it's not just a matter of clicking a button. There's a lot of programming that goes into the generation of data out of databases that takes significant amount of time out of staff, and it's a significant workload that we, that we provide there. Next step, and this is the exciting part, is now that we've got a base of a very solid system up and running, we're, we're able now to do better understanding of data integrity, trying to get that, that all providers are using consistent definitions and information going in the system, so the system has some value. But now with a good base, we're able to now use a technology in this system to enhance the services out there. So we're looking at mobile technology for the, for the homeless count in the future, so tablets or smartphones could be used, and it's a direct link and, and adding data to the system.
So Barry, what are you going to use, an iPad for the number one, or?
We, we could.
You got it there and started.
Yes, and so, yeah, we're going to be exploring that to see what, what it could be. It could be any tablet, whether it's an iPad or an Android or, or a smartphone even, would be a technology based on mobility in order to eliminate manual activity occurring in the system and probably enhance our accounts significantly. We're positioned that we can add many more programs to it, and we're moving to outreach and to help those non, that's the non-funded, non-HUD-funded entities to join the system in order to give us that, that information. So this is kind of the, the vision and the hope of the HMIS system. I think it was a, a good transition. I think by transitioning it and the wisdom of the board to enter into that agreement with United Way was, was good in the sense that we were able to now enhance it for the benefit of the community and, and to give this wealth of information to the, the homeless providers. So that's a quick summary, just wanted to give you a status update associated with that.
Mr. Chair, thank you. That's exciting. And, and I tried to pull it up on my site here, and I got an oops on the PowerPoint. So I'd like to have a copy of the PowerPoint.
Sure, we'll send that over to you.
And I, I expect Supervisor Bennett would, too, as we worked on this 10-year plan, and this became frankly a request that came from the providers and the community, saying we really need a stronger HMIS system. And, and we had to move through some, some, we had to move through it and, and get it done. And it really was some champions sitting out here who said, "Yeah, we can do this," and I, I know it was extra work, but what a great product to have.
I think it's a great value. The community is very supportive of it. It's like a, you know, they're, they're enthusiastic about it, and it's a, something very positive for their, for their world right now.
Very much. I think as the federal government, at least HUD stays focused on, you know, taking, taking care of homeless veterans and, and the programmings that they will be pushing out to us at the local level that are, are, some within the, the CSCs, but some in the competitive, this will be a great tool for us to be competitive, so.
Absolutely. It gives us the tools now to apply and adapt to the changes, and there's a lot, many changes coming down our way, so we appreciate the support.
Yeah, good work on it. Thank you.
Yeah. There are so many agencies that work with the homeless, and for them to be able to see real time what's happening, to be able to case manage, it must be incredible. What's the feedback like that you're?
Well, I think the feedback's been positive with the community, and I think as they worked with the 10, 10-year plan on, you know, what their, their goal is to have a common intake application, if you will, assessment models, these type things, all that will lead into the integration better with this type of system. So it's, it's positioned everything to be doable now.
Right.
And that, and that's what we're hopeful for.
That's great, John.
Yep. All right.
See, aren't you glad you spent more than five minutes?
Yeah. Thank you for letting me have a little bit more.
Yeah, that's good.
And thanks to staff, too, for a good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sheriff's Department. Sorry we're late.
So they send the brains, the looks, the-
Chief Cromback. Okay.
I'm going to get you back on schedule.
Good.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm John Cromback here, presenting on behalf of Sheriff Dean, asking your board to adopt a resolution terminating the proclamation of local emergency from March the 2nd.
Second.
Well, I think across the state, this is looked at, the, the incredible response that we had in not having any homes burned down. I mean, it's just has really put a model there. I think a little bit of a different strategy was used, very effective. I was at the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy last night and just hearing from national parks and state parks and how much they appreciate, you know, they save some of the campgrounds, and I think they were talking about one building that burned down to the ground that they were trying to remove anyway, you know, so I'm just, I know there was a, a lot of, a lot of support, not only from the homeowners who feel like it was a miracle, and hearing Dr. Rush talking at the Cal State Channel and Site Authority, absolutely calling it a miracle where they were surrounded by fire and saved all the structures. And it's just, it was an incredible response and a grateful public, and even though we lost a lot of, you know, wild land and open space, we know that we're going to have the best wildflowers ever next year, too, so. But we just appreciate, and, and not having our, our, our public safety folks injured, too. And another positive result I see, too, is we're putting together some good evacuation plans for horses out in Hidden Valley and now looking at in Ventura Park. So we learn from all of these, and I'm just, we're all so pleased with the outcome of this and glad that it's also being paid for by the state.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank all the staff.
We need a vote from somebody there. Thanks for doing that, and hopefully we get paid for the state for it. Okay. So we, are we going to go back into closed session? Do we have, right now, or do you have the people here, or do you want to do right before the 1:15?
Your pleasure.
Whatever you guys want to do. I don't know if your people, the labor's ready.
Are they here? I mean, okay.
Why don't we do, we only have 15.
Well, they finished it, and they know they're done.
Yeah, then they're done, and then we got that, and we're back at 1:15. And no announcements, out of closed session.
Okay, good. Okay. I like that. You can't even see around it. Does your face look something that come around your head up there in the picture? All right. So, ready to go? Let's open. Yes.
I'm up, right?
You are there. There you go. See, that's a.
All right.
She's so energetic.
Okay, um, well, you know, we have come a long, long way since the county started participating in the corporate games. I'm Kristy Madden with the County Executive Office, and we started participating in the corporate games back in 2007, and the county was going through a reduction in force, and we found out about the corporate games kind of late in the, in the season, cobbled together a team, and it's been just uphill to success ever since. This year represents our third year of winning the Division Double A title. And so, this is our, our small trophy memento that will be housed out in the trophy cabinet just outside the boardroom. You will notice prior to the three entries for the County of Ventura, it was Amgen was always the reigning champion of the Double A division. So, this year, Amgen actually came in third place. Navy came in second place. We had quite an increase in the number of teams that participated in the A division this year. We went from, I think, seven teams all the way up to 12. So, it was quite a significant competition. We have a very small representation of the number of people here who made this happen. I know you're all busy looking at the, at the photos. They're kind of fun. So, what I've done in your board letter is tried to recognize everybody who participates in making this a success. And of course, we can't do this without our event coordinators. And the event coordinators, if you don't know, we're limited to no more than three teams per event, and we have some events that are very, very oversubscribed, meaning we have enough people interested in participating to fill five or more teams. So, our coordinators have the difficult and often unpopular task of having to try and decide who gets to participate in one of the three teams, and then more importantly, who gets to represent the county on the, we call it the number one or the A team, because we have three teams. You'll see in Exhibit One is a listing of all of the results. And these coordinators have gotten so sophisticated that in virtually every single event, the county A team ranked above the other two county teams in all events, which means it put us above and beyond for our competitiveness in the corporate games. In fact, we had actually clinched the Division A title before we went into the closing ceremonies this year. So, it was really pretty phenomenal. So, what I'd like to do, I do have a whole stack of certificates of recognition for both our event coordinators and all the volunteers. There's the VCMC booth. I'll tell a little brief story about the VCMC booth. We've been doing barbecues at the closing ceremonies, and VCMC helps coordinate that. So, last year, they came out and set up a table, and Amgen was placed right smack dab in front of the tug-of-war space. And the staff at VCMC said, hey, that's going to be our spot next year. You watch, you watch. And due to, who was it? Was it Matt?
Wes.
Wes. Due to Wes's commitment, he got out at, what time do you think he came out to the site to reserve that spot? Mike knows the answer. You can't answer. Okay. 4:00 AM. He was out there reserving the spot. And so, we had a perfect view right in front of the tug-of-war table, and a lot of, a lot of companies who were very jealous when they came up and were quite disappointed to see that we had taken that spot. So, there was a lot of people from VCMC who helped to make the closing ceremonies a success. Of course, we have the infamous T-shirt trouble, I call it. You know, producing and distributing these T-shirts is always kind of a hassle. I have Sally Harrison and Meg Kimball Drury, who worked the 5K registration table. We have such a big team for the 5K for the County of Ventura that we have our own separate registration table. So, it was a wonderful, wonderful event, huge success. Next year represents the 25th anniversary of the corporate games for the City of Ventura. So, they are already gearing up for a huge celebration, and we intend to help the city make that a success. We can't give them money, but we can certainly give them our thoughts and our interest in, in contributing and donating our services. So, what I'd like to do is ask everybody to come up here. Somewhere, I had a phone. I don't know. Somebody took it. We could take a picture. It's right here. We can get somebody, hey, Julie, I got to point out Julie here. Julie didn't bring her medals, okay? You think Jesse, oh, there they are. Okay. How many medals does Julie have? Julie has seven medals from this year's games alone. And I shudder to think how many overall since we've been participating. Have you counted, Julie? About 45 medals she's earned in the corporate games. So, not to say that the county's not competitive.
Kristy, what activity?
At least Julie's competitive.
What activity? Or activities?
So, can we get all of our, yes.
Kristy?
Yes.
How many medals, 45 medals and?
Forty-five medals since we've been participating.
In what activities?
Oh, what events? Oh.
Bowling, sand castle, frisbee golf.
Horseshoe, holding frisbees, darts. A lot. A lot of stuff. So, there's something for everyone. Something for everyone. And Mike, our own Mike Powers, got a medal this year in tennis, right? Tennis event. So, there it is, our article. Okay. So, if we can get all of our volunteers up front, we'll take a quick picture. Can you take a picture, Brian? Of course you can. Make sure it's on camera and not video. All right. Come on, everybody up front. We have to do this.
Go on, Julie. Get up there. All our volunteers.
Our coordinated, coordinated volunteer medalists, Debbie, you're a volunteer. Come on, we all got, we tell them like you like. Come on, you guys squeeze over. Come on, come on.
There's more space, more air space. Squeeze, squeeze.
It's not that heavy. I can teach it around. You can.
Okay, are we good?
Yep. One, two, three. Let's do another one. One, two, three. There you go.
Beautiful. All right, thank you. All right. We'll see you again next year for a kickoff.
Once again, you do us proud.
Now, I'm going to ask someone to take this back.
What's that? Wait, are you going to take them all?
I want to move it down out there and give the rest of them to Jesse and all Brown men.
Oh, shoot, they're leaving. I want to say something to them.
I don't know. Do we want to move that trophy? Maybe we should. Should we take the trophy, Mike? What do you think?
Your, your call. That's.
I don't know if it's good for your interview.
But so, we'll get one more. I know. All right, thank you guys.
You're welcome.
That was my professional side. John, right?
That was my professional side.
And he must be Lisa? Lisa, hi. Your name?
It's Lisa.
Nice to see you all. All right. I know, we're all here. Can we do this? Oh, I guess we have to wait. Brian, we have to wait until 1:30?
You do have to wait until 1:30. It's a couple of minutes. We're all kind of.
She's got 1:30. Okay, so.
Okay.
Thirty, item 32. It's going to be a public hearing.
Okay, now I have to try and put on my pseudo-professional hat.
Your business work.
Kristy Madden with the County Executive Office. We're in front of your board today to conduct what's called a TEFRA hearing for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds for the benefit of Waste Management Incorporated. The, the total bond issuance for Waste Management will be used throughout the state of California, a portion of which will be used for, for operations at the Simi Valley landfill. This is a required public hearing in order for Waste Management to be eligible for the tax-exempt bond issuance. I would like to point out a, an error on page two of your board letter. Third line says 2007. As County Council said, I don't think we can quite travel backwards through time. June 17th, 2013 is the due date for that. And in paragraph two on page two, it does identify what the proposed uses are for the bond proceeds. This is a pretty routine action, so if you have any questions, it'd be happy to answer. We do have representatives from both CFMA and Waste, CMFA and Waste Management here, if you have any questions.
Do you have a, do you have a description of what makes a company eligible to be, to do this?
Actually, I think it's the operation, if I'm correct. Yeah. I'll let John Stoker answer that question from CMFA.
Honorable Chair, members of the board, John Stoker, Financial Advisor to the California Municipal Finance Authority. It's a great question. It really is derived by the, the code and, and not only in state law, but federal law has determined who can finance tax-exempt bonds. Generally speaking, it's nonprofit companies, except for public benefit organizations like this, because it's solid waste, waste collection, control is important to the community, is similar to affordable housing, which is all, also qualified, even if you're a for-profit developer, because of the benefits of.
So, so any, any company that's doing something in a sense that's what we'd say for the public good as a general, I mean, there's private, there are, could be private companies, nonprofits, like you said, but somebody who's doing something else in the county, because I understand this is county, because a lot of cities, I heard hospitals do this, private hospitals and private, small business, large business, they all can do this kind of thing, as long as they qualify under the certain requirement.
Under the code, yes, sir.
Under the code. And that's it. And, and part of the goal is to help them be as effective as we can with less expensive money to help make sure that the public good is, is maintained. Is that what this is all about?
Certainly. And, and just for the, the, the board's understanding, this is a requirement not only for federal, but for state law, so that we can go apply to the state, actually California Debt Limit Allocation Committee, where the treasurer, the controller, and the governor's director of finance sit on the board to decide whether to award allocation of this project based on the public benefit.
I see. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Twenty-five percent of the issuance cost that goes to nonprofit, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Which is, I think is beneficial to the community.
Yes, sir.
And I think those, was it 1% of the issuance costs, administrative costs of the county comes back to the county?
Twenty-five percent of the issuance fee the CMFA receives that's apportionable to the county will come back to the general fund, and then another 25% will go to a nonprofit.
And to the nonprofit.
Yes, sir.
I think it's good.
All right. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. So, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have any cards on this? No cards on this? So, we'll close the public hearing. Any more questions? Do you have any comments? Okay. Then we can, a motion in a second.
I'd just state my no vote, as it was last time. We had something similar for Waste Management on here. As I can see, the benefits going for nonprofit or affordable housing for the public good, but I, I just don't see where Waste Management, as a private company that makes a good profit, necessarily needs this hand. So, I'll be voting against it.
Passes three to one. Thank you. And I think that's the end of our meeting. Nothing else? Brian, Leroy, another closed session. We're done?
Nothing else.
We'll adjourn. We're adjourned from here. Thank you.